I'd like to call the Mendon City Council meeting to order for Monday, March the 2nd, 2020, 5:30 PM. With our prayer, we have Councilwoman Pam Bloxum and with our pledge, we have Councilman Herbert Taylor III.
Heavenly Father, your hope arises with each dawn, pushing back the rubble of our lives. Each new day reminds us of your grace, you paint hope across our skies. Into the deafening cry of hopelessness, you whisper love. Love that catches us, holds us. There is no end, just new beginnings, no finish, just new starts. Into your resurrection, we follow you to bathe in hope. You are alive, not only in the world, but in us. And so, we carry your hope within our souls. Help us to lift our eyes and feel resurrection hope arise in our lives. In Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like everyone to silence their cellphones, if you don't mind, please. I'd also like a motion to amend the agenda to add item L for police new hire.
I make that motion to add item L, police new hire.
Motion made by Keith Beard.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pam Bloxum. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails to add L to the agenda.
What was the vote there?
I asked for a motion to add
What was the vote?
L to the agenda for a police new hire.
What was the vote?
The vote, all were in favor except for Mr. Taylor, and he voted against it.
So it passes.
No.
It has to be unanimous, okay. Okay.
It has to be unanimous.
Yes, sir, I forgot, thank you.
Okay, item A on the agenda is to award presentations for the Moda Gra Parade. Could we have Mendon Main Street to come up, please?
Well, we have There. Oh, I've got it, okay, sorry. All right, we have this evening, to present the awards for the Mendon Main Street Parade that was held in Mendon on February the 8th. And first off, we're going to start off with most creative entry. And that was the Crew Day Ambassador, I mean, excuse me, sorry. Crew of Nemesis from North Webster Parish, if they want to come up, please. Thank y'all for participating, we appreciate it. All right, next, we have the best small float, and that was Pine Grove United Methodist Church.
We have a bachelor, want to take a picture?
Oh, sure. You've got somebody to take a picture?
Yes.
Good. You brought everybody on the float, that's good. You know, somebody, okay, she's back there. Thank y'all for participating, we appreciate it. All right, our next presentation is for the best marching group, and that is the Ladies of Excellence, the Steppers. Ladies, if y'all want to come up. Oh, you got somebody to take a picture? Debbie, can you take a picture for us? No. Have you got anybody taking a picture? Oh, you get it, okay, Carrie will get it for us.
I think it's the people going out.
All right, thank you, thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming. And the last award is the most spirited, and that goes to the Crew Day Ambassadors. Thank you, everyone, for participating. It was a beautiful day, we had wonderful participation in the parade, but great participation on the streets. So, we really appreciate it, and that's what it's all about, seeing those happy faces and the kids smiling and everything. And we appreciate everybody that took part, thank you.
B on our agenda is to adopt the minutes for the regular council meeting for February 3rd, and then for the special city council session held on February the 11th, 2020. Do I have a motion for that?
I move to adopt the minutes of the council regular session held on February the 3rd, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Bloxum, seconded by Keith Beard. Do we have any discussion on that?
Well, we didn't. There was nothing on the minutes where Mr. Minifield spoke.
Which, are you talking about February 3rd or the 11th?
Well, on both.
On both. Okay, so what do you
I don't think it's a complete. And then you've got a regular session on both of them, and the second one was the special session.
Okay.
If you look down at
Which one?
Special session is the 11th.
Okay. It's sitting right there.
See it?
Down here, behind it.
Yeah.
No. Oh, down here, just in the plan, okay.
Yes, sir, that's right.
That can just be changed in the wording when we have somebody make that. That, I thought you were talking in the body of the minutes itself.
No, they are correct, I think, in that part.
Is there any other
Yeah, that part's correct.
Discussion? No more discussion?
Well, when we look at the minutes for the special session, it says the I don't think this is how this happened, when you look in the last paragraph, because after the discussion, you brought the motion up again, but it wasn't, well, it wasn't voted on at the very end, right before the meeting was adjourned.
What are you talking about, Ms. Walker?
When you look in the last paragraph, and it talks about after the discussion for the substitute motion, well, it wasn't voted on again before the meeting was adjourned.
The substitute motion, it never, it never got a second, so it died?
No, it says, "Inhere to vote on the original motion," because you, you went back to the original motion, but it, it wasn't voted on.
It never received a second?
Oh, the original motion, she said.
Original motion.
Oh, the original motion, we voted on the original motion.
No.
I don't recall voting on it.
Okay, is there anything else in there that y'all make note of?
You talking about the special session, Terry?
I'm talking about the special session, like, at the very end, right before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Is there anything else?
So, we need to add that? Do we, can we add?
Well, it's just not worded right, it's not, it's not
What, what we need to do is table it and bring it back to the next city council meeting and
That's just the special session, we can vote on the first one.
Yes, yes, you can go ahead and vote on the second one, just on that.
Well, the first one was when Mr. Bradford said something about, when you look at it, it doesn't
The minute doesn't include anything that our attorneys did.
We need to add that, too.
Yeah.
Basically, the minutes aren't complete, as written on the, on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll just table both of them and bring them back next month for y'all to look at.
I would like to make a substitute motion to table the agenda for the regular session and the special session of the February meetings.
We have a
Not the agenda, the minutes.
The minute, I would like to make a substitute motion to table the minutes from the regular session and the special session of the February meetings.
So, February 3rd and February 11th?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walker, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're going to go to C, which is the Personnel Fire Department Promotion. Chief, would you like to come up here, please, sir?
I would like to recommend the promotion of John Thompson, who has 34 years and 10 months with the City Men on the Fire Department, to Assistant Chief, to replace Chief, Assistant Chief John Tucker, who retired with 37 years and, no, 39 years and 7 months. So, I'd like y'all to take that into consideration.
Upon recommendation of the Fire Chief, Kent Moret, I move to approve the promotion of Fire Captain John Thompson to the rank of Assistant Fire Chief.
Motion made by Mr. Taylor? Seconded by Ms. Walker, do we have any discussion or questions on that?
Congratulations.
Jumped the gun on that one.
Let's vote first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, congratulations on your promotion. Item D is approval of a final plot that we spoke of the other day in the workshop. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make it. I move to approve the final plot for the lot split of property belonging to Antipasto Beach, located at Germantown Road, approximately one quarter mile south of Country Club Circle, as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Beard, seconded by Mr. Taylor. I noticed Mr. Beach, I think, is it not, yes, Mr. Beach is back there. Are there any questions or discussions on that?
In the workshop, it was mentioned that some of that was going to be taken off?
Yes, sir, they decided to leave that on there, so they wouldn't have to redo the whole thing and revisit it later. Mr. Cooley, would you like to give a more detail?
From what I understand, the negotiations for the other property has been put on hold, and then Beach wants to move forward as approved by the planning commission.
So, that's correct, Mr. Beach. Do we have any more questions or discussions from anyone? That said, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. E on your agenda is the final step to adopt the ordinance 1108, Annexation of Property. That's for Rentals Industrial Contractors Incorporated, doing business as Catamaran Services. It's been run in the paper, and all, all the legal aspects have been done of that, so this is our, our last to vote on this, to bring it into the city. Do I have a motion on that?
I move to adopt the ordinance number 1108, Annexation of Property Annexing that certain city property most poorly described in ordinance number 1108, and to the corporate limits of the city of Mendon.
Motion is made by Mr. Bradford.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Beard, do we have any discussions on that? There are no discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item F on the agenda is a budget amendment. We discussed this the other day in the workshop. This is for the airport to adjust the budget with a half a million dollars, so that we can get the free grant money for the, for the airport overlays. You've got all the information, again, attached in the back of your pamphlet there. Are there, do I have a motion for that?
I motion to approve to amend, to approve to amend the 2019-2020 budget as presented.
Motion is made by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bradford. Are there any discussions?
Yes, um, basically, what's going on is we're taking $500,000 out of the reserves to put as front money to advertise for bids, and once the bid is took, and once the bid is taken up, then the city will be reimbursed that if we awarded the grant?
No, sir. It's, we're not taking any money out of the reserve, it's basically
Out of the general fund.
No, sir, we're not taking any money out of the general fund. It's, Mr. Flewer, explain that, but the deal about it is, we're not taking any money out of the budget, it's basically just a paper thing.
Moving it around.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir, we're just moving it around on paper. And when the, it's a, it's a $2 million grant, FAA grant, and we won't pay the $2 million out at any given one time, it might be 500,000. Then we invoice them, they pay us back till we get to the end, end of the day and pay the 2 million. But we won't move any money out of the reserve, no. Are there any more discussions on that? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. G is authority to advertise for bids for the 2019-2020 Street Improvement Project. This is to overlay and improve the entire length of Fitcher Road, Harton Street, from the end of Harton Street down on Treeport Road, all the way around to the top of the hill. That road there would be milled, and then a two-inch overlay applied. Fitcher Road, let me go back, Fitcher Road would be milled and a, and a two-inch overlay. And then, we're going to come over here on Gleason Street, which is behind the Civic Center here. Gleason Street, but, which is behind here. Gleason Street runs along the police station, we'll mill that, we'll make the corner, which in turn, turns into Pine Street, and goes all the way to the top of Goodwill, where we'll stop at the Coca-Cola plant. There'll be a two-inch mill overlay there. And, and are there any, do I have a motion on that already? I just explained it.
Well, that's not what this says. It doesn't say we're going to overlay Gleason Street, it says Pine Street from Gleason Street to Goodwill.
It's, it says and Pine Street, Gleason Street to Goodwill Street. So, what it is, Pine Street's just in the center.
Right.
Terry Combs, would you like to come up and give a, maybe I'm not giving the correct detail where it starts on Gleason and ends at Goodwill?
You're not reading it right.
I, I'm explaining it, is what I'm doing.
I can read.
Good.
Good evening, everyone. The proposed overlay that, that I have presented to you all is, the first one was Fitcher Road, started at Highway 80, going all the way to Homer Road, which will be a mill and overlay. Here, we'll start at, at the intersection of Gleason and Pine Street, but Pine Street will be the actual road that will be doing the work. And we'll go from Pine Street all the way to Goodwill Street. That also will be a mill and overlay of two inches. Horton Street, starting at Treeport Road, going to Middle Landing. There's one section that I'm going to mill an inch and a half, and there's another section where that, I'm sorry, that I'm going to lay an inch and a half, no milling, and then there's another typical section where I will mill off two inches and put back two inches. Those are the three that are being proposed for us to rehab. While I'm standing up here, I want to stress to you all that, since I've been here since 2016, I have done some rating of our city streets, one being the worstest to five being the best. Back on June the 14th, I sent an email out to the mayor, and I addressed, and I had Kathy Newhart Public Works Carpet, Michael LaFleur, was carpet of my fire year plan for overlays. At this time, I want to present you all this email, so you can see exactly what I'm trying to do. My main purpose is to try to take care of all the streets that we would say as our major fairways, the one that has the highest volume of traffic. I want to address those streets first, and then be able to move into our streets and size of our neighborhoods. It's very important that we don't linger on this. There are some roads that ones and twos are my main priority that I have rated. When the base begins to failure, to deteriorate, it gets really expensive. When the base is still in pretty good, pretty good shape, you can go in and mill and overlay, and sometime, it's not expensive. So, I just want to put that on your mind, but I'm going to give you all this email, so that each and one of you have a copy, and you will see exactly what I'm, I'm trying to do.
I move to authorize city clerk to advertise for bids for 2019-2020 Street Improvement Project.
Right now, how much, Mr. Flewer, is there discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right.
Do we have
I just made the motion.
Yeah, motion made by Mr. Taylor, seconded by
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Bradford. What was your question, Ms. Walker?
Mr. Flewer, the, the email I sent you today, how much do we have in Street Department for overlays? What's the balance on that account?
Five sixty four. Balance of the capital improvement street fund is 565,000, rounded, as well as Mr. Combs has in his personal budget for the Street Department, 234,000 left.
Okay.
Mr. Combs, I remember you, I remember you sharing this with us, and I appreciate it, back then. And I think I remember telling you, only thing is, Country Club Circle is in E, so you might want to just change that, that's not in my district. That's in District E.
In E.
Yes, sir, it's in E, yes, sir. Which is fine, I don't care where it is, it, it needs fixing, so, you know, wherever, wherever these streets are, it doesn't matter to me, they're in the city, and they need to be fixed. Especially before they get too bad, like you said, then we're in a real big hole.
Now, let me say also that the 234,000 should not be used to the last penny, because he has some minor potholes to fill with that money. So, but you asked me for the total amounts, and these are the amounts available at the moment.
Okay.
Are there any more discussions on that? No discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H on the agenda is to authorize the request to get quotes for possible street overlay, which is Country Club and Longleaf Drive.
I move to authorize the mayor to obtain the estimate cost for possible street overlay projects on Country Club, Circle, and Longleaf Drive.
Motion made by Mr. Taylor?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Are there any discussions or comments on that? Mr. Combs, how do those, I don't see Longleaf on here. Is that, do you, do you remember how, how it writes?
A one.
A one, okay.
Negative one. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll rate it one, okay. And those streets are going to need complete rehabs, aren't they?
Complete rehab, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Are there any more discussions on that from anybody? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is I. The authorized to advertise for bids for the Mendon Airport Runway 119 and Airfield Lighting Rehabilitation Project. This is a more FAA grants that we will be reimbursed. Do I have any, I mean, do I have a motion for that, please?
I move to authorize our city clerk to advertise for bids for Mendon Airport Runway 119 and Airfield Lighting Rehab Project.
And we have a motion made by
Second.
Mr. Beard, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Are there any discussions on that? With no discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J is Mr. Flewer.
Members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, like every council meeting, I'm going to start out with the summary report for the major funds, means general fund, water and electric fund, and the sales tax funds. We still see on general fund and water and electric fund, we still see figures below the budgeted level, budgeted levels, specifically at the water and electric fund. For an example, one of the reasons is the revenue for the electric sales is down compared to the previous year, as well as on the expense side, the cost for us to pay to SWPCO is down 700,000. That is the difference to the level we had budgeted from the previous year, it's one of the explanations, but the expenses are not there at the moment, but naturally, also not the revenue. On the sales tax fund, we are doing pretty good, we are almost at 100%. The latest sales tax figures for the collection in the month of February, for the month of January, is 472,000. Previous month, you usually cannot compare, but I just want to mention the number. Previous month was 599,000, but it was the Christmas business, too. Previous year, and that's encouraging, previous year, we had 445,000. So, we see an increase of 5.9%. I always look at the sales tax figures from other cities and towns around us. Spring Hill plus 5.2%. Town of Sibley is down 34%. I don't know what happened there, but just for the information, School Board, Webster Parish School Board saw an increase of 12.1%. The police jury saw an increase, almost 13%. So, the figures are good on the sales tax side. Apparently, the delinquent figures are going down, means the people are paying their, their taxes every month. Delinquent in the total amount of 472 was only 4,000. So, hardly any delinquent figures to report. The cash report, I want to give you a little bit more explanation how this figure comes together. We show at the moment, a total of 17.8 million. Now, that figure is actual cash in the bank, means you go to the bank, going to pull it out of your account, including 750,000 deposits for utilities, which we cannot spend, because it goes back to the residents, if they're going to close their account. We show actual cash, 8.4 million. And then, we have investments in the amount of 4.6 million. Included in these 4.6 million is a 2.5 million emergency fund, so to speak, in case we have electrical problems with our wiring, if there is a tornado going through, that money is dedicated for things like that, to replace the lines. 4.6 million, including these 2.5. And then, the last figure is savings. Everybody should have some savings, or the city also. Everybody should have some savings, so the city also, savings in CDs with local banks and it's split out in, uh, basically every bank we have in town, four point eight million. That makes a total of seventeen point eight million compared to the previous months, the previous months, we had seventeen point seven. So hardly any change. Other financial information I want to share with you tonight because I believe it's important that you all understand and hear what's going on. First of all, we had an emergency repair of a lift station on Harper Lane. Um, the repair was fifty thousand dollars, it was not in the budget, but that repair, uh, was necessary because the lift station, uh, worked only at a rate of fifty percent. What was done was put new pumps in, a new railing system, complete new guts, so to speak. Uh, the reason why it had to be done, if the lift station would, would have failed, uh, several houses in the neighborhood would have been flooded. So that repair was necessary and it's done already, so we are good to go there. Our yearly audit is still in progress, uh, even we're gonna see the silver or the light at the end of the tunnel. A preliminary report is to be expected in about two weeks, which, and this report will include also adjustments to the general ledger for the past and the current fiscal year. Figures which will be moved, uh, back to the old fiscal year, uh, for revenues and expenses. In reference to the audit, I want to share also with you, and which is usually overlooked, as part of the audit, we have to provide every year an actuarial valuation of a liability in the city when we offer, uh, health insurance for our retirees. Uh, the latest, uh, report indicates, um, an unfunded liability of ten point seven million. So the cash report is not always gold when it shines there, which means if somebody, or if everybody retires and goes home tomorrow, the retirees for the health insurance been eating up ten point seven million dollars. Unfunded liability, what we are doing is, and it was never funded in a way, that money was set aside, we are paying basically on a pay-as-you-go basis. That is one reason why I always ask for caution when you talk about, uh, which money we have and how much money we can spend. There is always something in the back which needs to be observed. We finally also, and, uh, I think two council meetings back, I talked about the retirement system. Uh, at that time, we had, uh, a projection from the retirement system for the firefighters and, uh, the projection was an increase by four point five percent. We still have not heard the final word, but we heard from the other two. The regular employees, for the regular employees, the employer contribution will increase by one point seven five percent, which will bring the contribution from the employer up to twenty-nine point five percent. Not only that, that they raised the employer, they're also gonna dig into the employee's pocket. Uh, the retirement system increased the contribution from the employee by zero point five percent, makes it ten percent. These are the regular employees. Municipal police officers, the employer contribution will increase by one point two five percent, which will bring it up to thirty-three, thirty-three point seven five percent. My concern is that, and that will conclude my, will conclude my report, that sooner or later, the personnel costs, including the benefits for the employees, will reach a level, and if the city does not create revenue increases, the city will have a hard time to fulfill the requirements, what's needed for the residents. It is painful to see when you have a thirty-five million dollar budget and thirteen million are for personnel costs. But we need the employees, so something has to be done. That will conclude my report, if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flure. Item K is the police report with Chief Cropper. Come up, please.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Month of January, we collected nine thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents in city fines, fi- or excuse me, ninety dollars to the crime lab, five hundred and seventy-one dollars to city court, five hundred and ten dollars to the marshal service, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to the injured defenders office, thirty-four dollars to the clerks fund, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the wear center, eighteen dollars to the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents to off-duty witness fees, fifty-one dollars to the court case management information system, forty-five dollars to the Louisiana Traumatic Head and Spinal Cord Injury Trust Fund, one hundred and seventy dollars to the judicial building fund, four dollars and fifty cents to the judicial education fund, totaling eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have a motion to accept his report?
I move to accept the public's report for January twenty-twenty as presented.
Motion made by-
Second.
Mr. Bradford, seconded by Mr. Beard. Are there any discussion or questions for the chief? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Would you give us your all report, please, sir?
It's got a couple of things, uh, I, I left all y'all a copy of, we talked about the census takers coming into town.
Yes, sir.
I believe that starts in April, is that right, correct? Uh, left you some information that kinda identifies what these people are gonna be wearing and what, they'll, they'll have a briefcase that will have some markings on it. And I just want to let everybody know that i- if anybody has a question, uh, somebody knocking on the door, and that they can call the police department and, and we will advise them whether or not they, we feel like these people are legitimate or not, cause believe it or not nowadays, you know, someone's gonna figure out how to use it as, for a scam somewhere or another, cause it's, that's just life now. Just want to kinda report some of the stats that we, uh, can, got together during the month of February, we've actually, uh, made ninety arrests. Uh, we, uh, took six hundred and eighteen incidents, we had, I'm excuse, excuse me, one hundred and eighteen incidents, we had six hundred and fifty-seven dol- six hundred and fifty-seven calls for service, one hundred and forty-one, uh, citations. We had ninety-six warrants issued, we had seventy-four warrants that were served, and we actually worked thirty-six crash reports in the city limits of Mendon during the month of February. And that's all we got.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
We appreciate your report. Did it, eh? Mr. Girding, will you come up and give a report on, uh, the new app? So if anybody has any questions, they can ask you a question, please, sir.
Mr. Girding's our director of social media and handles all of our, uh, our new app in town and our, our website.
This is a little weird, I'm not used to being up here, I'm used to being back there. Um, so, basically, we have a new city app, it's, it's out now and you can download it right now, it's for iOS and Android. Um, the, the app is gonna be such an asset for the city, you'll be able to, uh, download, um, uh, the, you'll be able to look at the videos from the council meetings, like right now, uh, right after it finishes, it'll be up on the app. Um, so you'll be able to look at it and not try to hunt for it on YouTube or Facebook or whatever. Public notices, that's gonna be a big one, so you don't have to, if, if you're just, it's inconvenient, you can't really keep up to date of what the city's doing. Uh, public notices is gonna be available for you to look on your phone, so it's just right there at your fingertips. Calendar, uh, we will have a city calendar on there full with, uh, all the events that are going on with the city. And, uh, so you could keep and add it to your own personal calendar, if, let's say, Grilling on Main's coming up and, uh, you wanna keep the information and so you don't have to write it down or anything, it just adds to your personal calendar. Uh, you'll be able to pay your bill, your utility bill on this app. So it's, that's gonna be very convenient for people that are maybe out of town or can't, uh, get to the utility box in time. Uh, this is gonna be an awesome feature for businesses in, in, in our town. They'll be able to keep, you know, uh, they'll be able to have directions and special deals and it's free advertisement for any and all businesses in our town, which is gonna be so awesome, because they'll be able to, uh, log in, they'll have their own personal login and they'll be able to update their daily deal or whatever they're doing that day. So if they have twenty percent off, um, shoes or something, you'll be able to show the app. And that'll encourage people to, to download the app as well, show the app and you get twenty percent off, you know, and they can do whatever they want with that. So that's gonna be awesome for businesses in town and it's gonna help, um, uh, especially when we, uh, have a new, another feature that's gonna really help that as well, it's called push notification. So we'll be able to, if, and it's, and it's really interesting the way it's gonna work is, uh, we have, uh, geo spots or geo, um, links. So, uh, whenever you enter a certain part of the city, you will get a push notification that says, um, let's say Bobby's Hobbies, for instance, is having a, uh, deal on model airplanes or something like that. So, uh, if you're interested in that, or if Roma's is having a, um, a special, then, then that kinda will happen too. So I, I touched on video, uh, videos of the council meetings and, uh, Facebook will also be, any, anytime we post something from Facebook, we'll have a, a spot on there for people that don't have Facebook, can look and still see what we're posting and if there's just interest and wanna know. Uh, if there is an issue, uh, this will be later down the road, we're still working out the kinks. Uh, reporting an issue is gonna be an option for people that if, let's say the part of town, let's say they lose power and they wanna report that, um, they can, so there'll be an option to report, you know, power's out on Lee Street. Um, or there's a pothole or a, a light pole fell, tree fell, whatever, whatever the case may be. They'll be able to do that straight from the app, so they won't have to call a number, you know, or anything. Uh, there's also economic development, so if you're wanting to start a business, or if you wanna look for property that's for sale, that's also gonna be integrated in the app. So that's kind of what the basis of what the app is gonna be doing and I think it's gonna be a really good asset for the city. Any, uh, any questions?
Um, I don't really have a question about that. Well, I do, so you're saying that you can report issues, so who's going to filter that? How will, how will they know?
Depending on the category, um, it's gonna be a separate app that our line crews have. So whenever they report an issue, let's say it's potholes, it'll go to the street department. And so Terry and his crew will have their app and they will receive on their phone, uh, it's, uh, let's say a pothole on Main Street. So they'll see it and it'll geo-link it as well, so they'll be able to see where exactly it is in Mendon.
Okay.
So, that'd be a cool feature.
It will not replace what we have in place because everybody doesn't have a, a iPhone or anything like that, so.
Okay, I was just wondering if the department heads would be linked to it some type of way, instead of it going and just sitting, you know,
Right.
and, you know, not being responded to. The next thing, um, so now the council meeting's on YouTube, why didn't it just stay with Facebook?
Facebook was not stable, we were experiencing a lot of drops and that just wasn't acceptable for us. We wanted a consistent video for everyone to be able to see and, and it, you know, we may not be able to get the stream back up in time and some people may miss something, you know, so we wanted to keep it consistent and YouTube was the best option.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're gonna have public comments from the audience, if you will, when you come up to speak, if you'll give us your name, your address.
Don't do it.
Chief.
I thought, uh, Al failed. Remember Herbert, you voted against it. Are you talking about?
The new hire.
The new hire?
We had to have five to amend the budget, we had four.
Do we, do we wanna go back and revisit that? No? We would like to hire him? Okay. Okay, um, uh, public comments, um, three minutes, name, your district that you live in, please, is there anybody in the audience that wants to come up and say anything? Okay, if there are no public comments, we're gonna go to, uh, council comments and we're gonna start with Mr. Taylor.
No comments.
No comment, Ms. Walker?
Um, I, I, well, I really don't have any comments, but, um, I wanna address the letter that, that was here for us about Mr. Minifield not sitting here because this area is only for elected officials. So we received a letter today saying that he would not be seated up here and just in case you were wondering why, then that's the reason, because he's not an elected official. So, Chief, I guess that means you get to come back and and take your place up here.
I think he's gonna opt out.
But, um, um, also, going back to Mardi Gras, um, I just wanna thank, um, the Campbells. I was invited to their Mardi Gras party and I had a great time, so thank you and shout out to them.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Bradford?
No comment.
Mr. Beard?
I don't really have, uh, any personal comments, but, uh, I did wanna ask, Mr. Taylor, if you don't mind, I'm not trying to front or anything, I just wanted to know why you didn't wanna add this police officer to the agenda, if you didn't mind, just share that with us.
Because, uh, in the past, we haven't added items to the agenda, so why start now?
So we're not, I just, we're short and I knew we needed any-
We haven't amended the agenda in the past, so why would we start now? Times when I wanted items to be amended and added to the agenda, they were voted down.
Okay, so you're pouting and, and we're not gonna hire a policeman, cause you're pouting.
I'm gonna tell you like this, you can-
I just, I loo- I read his information, he's from Mendon, he's-
Don't ask me any more questions.
I, I'm just, okay, I'm gonna, then I'm gonna speak, I'm just saying, I read the information about this hire, he's from Mendon, born and raised here, went to school here and has good credentials and I just disappoint that we didn't hire him, so that's all I say.
I didn't say we wasn't gonna hire the young man, I just wasn't gonna add an item to the agenda.
Okay, Ms. Bloxham, do you have any comments, please, ma'am?
I would like to personally thank John Tucker for nearly forty years with the Mendon Fire Department and, uh, I know that he's been an asset to our community for all of those years and we'll miss him, but we wish him all the well, all the best during his years of retirement and I'm sure that that's gonna be forty more.
Thank you. And I would also like to, uh, touch on the, uh, sales tax over the past several months, we continue to see a small increase. This has been our largest increase, I think, since all of us have been sitting up here in the last thirteen months. So we appreciate all of our citizens for shopping local and in, and investing in our town. And I too would like to, uh, congratulate our new assistant fire chief, John Thompson. And, uh, John Tucker started to work for us back on, uh, July the ninth, nineteen eighty, it's a long time. And, uh, so we appreciate the, the services he's given our fire department, we are, we are very blessed to have the, the fire rates that we have and the service that they provide us and, as well as our police department, uh, Chief Cropper. Uh, I'm gonna touch base on, uh, the alcohol ordinance just for a minute. As most of y'all know, we passed the alcohol ordinance last month, that's a seventy, uh, not a seventy, but that's a twenty-page, a twenty-seven page document, legal, single space. A lot of time, a lot of effort went into that, uh, for four days, straight, solid. Wanda Pittman and Mike Flure and Chief Cro- Wanda Pittman and Mike Flewer and Chief Cropper and Pam Blox and Brent Cooley, myself, we worked on that constantly, along with, uh, giving Mr. Minifield back, um, things to look at and took out and put back in, uh, these individuals worked hard. After the ordinance was passed, that still wasn't finished, then we had to go back and, uh, do the retail application and, and the app, application for instructions, how to apply for it, uh, that's another two-page document that the same individuals worked several days on. I think we've got, uh, a good ordinance in place, uh, you can go online and download the application should you desire, and it, it shows different things that you might need, you can apply for the alcohol ordinance and parallel apply with the, with the state of Louisiana, you can't have one without the other one. When, uh, you get everything in place, Mr. Cooley, go see him, he will help walk, help walk, uh, help you walk through the application if need be, uh, different things have to come into place, like the fire marshal has to come in and inspect your facility and that type of thing, there's different, uh, different permits, whether it be a A, a B, or C. We will issue license starting on March the 17th, so if you, if you haven't, uh, started applying, chances are you won't be getting a license on the 17th, because it takes time, you have to do fingerprinting and background checks and, and things like that. So, uh, this is something new that, that Mendon has, we have, uh, several new, uh, people that are bringing businesses to town, um, I think it's gonna, uh, it's gonna be some changes for all of us, so, uh, let's embrace that, and, and, uh, we appreciate everything that, that the citizens do for us as far as shopping in town, so, uh, and, uh, Ms. Walker touched on, uh, uh, Mardi Gras, it was a, a, uh, good year for the Mardi Gras season, and, uh, and, and before that, we didn't even mention about the MLK parade, but the MLK parade, it, it was very well attended too, so we appreciate everybody coming out, and with that, meeting adjourned.